I like the teaser. Okay, thank you. Good evening. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board of Tuesday, May 17th, 2022. I would ask people to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry for the late start. We are having some technical difficulties with our Zoom portion of the meeting, and we are trying to get that resolved. So, right now, we think we may have it, maybe not. It's hard to say. For those people on Zoom, we have another alternative way for you to hear us, and hopefully, when you, should you wish to participate and speak, we can make that happen, too. We can't always keep the speaker on because of feedback in the auditorium here or at the stage. So, I will, so, let's see, we have to go over the specifics or the particulars. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live with the Lunenburg Public Access Channel on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after its conclusion. For those who would like to participate and have a computer, smartphone, or tablet, you can use the Zoom application. Like I said, we are currently having slight difficulties with it, although we have a workaround in temporary. But if you use the Zoom application, tonight's webinar ID is 909-174-0347. If you don't have any of those devices and still wish to participate and have access to a telephone, you can dial 888-475-4499, and once again, the webinar ID is 909-174-0347. The posted agenda lists all topics which may be discussed at tonight's meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may, in fact, be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion, to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. I'll open tonight's meeting and ask if there's any public comment from the Board.
I have none.
Any public comment from the public? Seeing no hands raised. Okay. Announcements, I guess the only announcement I have is probably the one you have for this Saturday.
Of the annual town election?
Yes, go ahead. Go for it.
The annual town election is this Saturday at the T.C. Passios Building from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and absentee ballots can be obtained from the Town Clerk's Office until this Friday by noon.
I encourage all voters to go out to the polls and vote. It's an important civic duty. Appointments, we had two poll hearings, but those are going to be postponed because of some notification deficiencies in how it was noted and what the, who got notified of the meeting, et cetera. So, those will be coming back at a future date?
It's going to be a whole new hearing, so it will be re-noticed with, and one of the poll petition hearings, the map was incorrect for the Flat Hill Road poll petition, so the Unitil will need to come back with a new map, and so, once that package is resubmitted, Elaine will reschedule that hearing date.
So, we didn't notify the right people, but we notified them with the wrong map, which is good, anyway, so that's...
And it was missing letters as well.
That's what I'm saying. We didn't notify all the people who needed to, and we notified them with the wrong map. Aside from that. Okay, Town Manager Annual Appointments. What are we starting with? Town Manager Appointments?
Yes. So, these are annual appointments that the Town Manager makes each year, beginning July 1st would be the new term, and so, I'll read down the list of the appointments, and these terms expire June 30th, 2023. The Animal Control Officer, Kathleen Como at 806 West Street, the Building Commissioner, Casey Burlingame, Alternate Building Commissioner, Eric Chertrand, Dam Keeper, Ronald Wilson, the Assistant Dam Keeper, Rich Patry, the DPW Director, William Bernard, Emergency Management Director, Fire Chief, Patrick Sullivan, the Radio Amateur Civil Emergency Service Control Officers, Ralph Schwick, Janine Schwick, and the Assistant Officer is Brian LeBlanc, the Field Driver, Kathleen Como, Boris Warden, Patrick Sullivan, Hazardous Waste Coordinator, Heather Lemieux, Hearings Officer, Heather Lemieux, Inspector of Plumbing and Gas is Gary Williams, Assistant Inspector of Plumbing and Gas, Richard Kapinas, Public Weirs, this is a list provided by PJ Keating, Rich Reynolds, Aaron Moran, Brian Kontois, Jay Valery, Mike Reynolds, and Jen Olivera, Inspector of Weights and Measures, Steve Collinane, Inspector of Wires, John Beery, Assistant Wiring Inspector, David Stone, Clock Winders, Mike Kidney, Chuck Venesia, William Tyler, Tom Alonso, and Louis Franco. So, used to saying Lou.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's kind of cringe a little. Well, Town Clockwinder brings a certain formality to it.
Yeah, yeah, true. Well, then, put the J in there, too.
It's like, stop pushing.
Tree Warden, William Bernard, and Interim Veteran Service Officer, David LaZan, Jr., and they have additional police officers on a separate list.
Now, those do not, those don't need it. Those are just your, solely your appointments, right?
Yes.
Good, all right.
To be ratified by the Board as well.
So, it is ratified. Okay, that's what I'm saying, okay.
Do you want to take this list first?
Sure. So, unless anybody has any questions, I would entertain a motion regarding the ratification of the Town Manager's list of appointments as just read.
Yeah, I move to ratify the Town Manager's list of appointments as just read.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? None.
Okay.
Congratulations, Tom. To Louis. Thanks.
I'll move on to the list of officers, police officers, and reserve officers, and civilian traffic members. So, for full-time officers, Chief Thomas Gamel, Lieutenant Jeffrey Thibodeau, Sergeant Sean Connery, Sergeant Joshua Toshi, Sergeant Sean Zaret, Sergeant John Morielli, Officer Joshua Matthew, Officer Jonathan Brock, Officer Bradley McNamara, Officer Jacob Lachance, Officer John Wagner, Officer Gage Russell, Officer Cameron Monroe, Officer Anthony Capucci, Officer Jeffrey Hill, Officer Nicholas Marino, Officer Matthew Pingatori, and Officer Jesse Reed. For Reserve Officers, Officer Lisa Milnicki, Officer Robert DeCosta, Officer Benjamin Campbell, Officer Paul Duquette, Officer Joel Ortega, Officer Paul Theodoulou, and for civilian traffic members, Paul Bozikas, Tony Brennan, and John Hazelrigg.
And once again, if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion on the ratification of the officers for reappointment to the Police Department effective July 1st, 2022.
Recording in progress.
There you go. I move to ratify, I move to ratify the list of police officers as read effective July the 1st, 2022.
Give me a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? You opposed, Louis?
No, aye.
Okay.
It's been a long day.
Call him Louis once, and this is what happens. We're not making that mistake.
Thank you.
All right, Town Manager Report.
All right, let's start with the list of vacancies. For the Boards and Committees, there is one vacancy on the Economic Development Committee, which is a member from the Open Space Committee, multiple vacancies on the Green Communities Committee, which is, includes a one regular member and two associate vacancies, and we do have one applicant right now, and one vacancy on the Historical Commission. Anyone interested in serving on these boards can find the application forms on the Town Website, complete them, and return them to the Select Board's Office, and if you have any questions on the rules and responsibilities, please feel to contact the Select Board's Office as well at 978-582-4130, extension 144. Current employment opportunities with the Town, we currently have library page position, heavy equipment operator positions, seasonal lifeguards, production technician for cable access, van driver for Council on Aging, and videographers for public access. More information can be found on these positions on the Town Website under Employment Opportunities and How to Apply. An update on 30 School Street, which is the old primary school building, the asbestos abatement project that we received funding from the state for $50,000, that's now complete. They finished this last Friday, and I'll be working on the remaining hazardous materials abatement that will need to be done before demolition. I also contacted Ray Dunnett about the town meeting vote, and he's going to put together an estimate for the demolition plans for that work. And one aspect of the demolition that we will need to address that will be, would be part of the bid specifications is retaining any bricks that either we want to reuse or resell, or sell, and obviously, that will be a impact to the cost of the project based on preserving those bricks and the extra work that would be needed, so, but we would need to figure that out in the short term. For the Ritter and Town Hall Certificate to Alter applications, the Ritter Certificate to Alter application was filed with the Planning Board on April 4th. The APDC deemed the application complete, and it was sent to Binding Review at their April 21st meeting, and the public hearing is this Thursday, May 19th, at 7:30 at the Ritter Building, which I will be attending. Our architect is not available. The Town Hall Certificate to Alter was filed with the Planning Board Office on April 21st. The APDC reviewed the application at their May 5th meeting, and the public hearing is scheduled for Monday, June 6th, at 7:30 p.m. at the Ritter Building. The work included in this project is, was a project in the Fiscal 22 Capital Plan, as well as work that needs to be done to the clock tower, and that's, will enable us to put back up the replica weather vane. We'll also need approval from Mass Historical Commission, as the Town Building, Town Hall Building has a preservation restriction agreement that restricts maintenance in order to preserve and protect the building and its historical integrity. Update on the Public Records Retention Project that was in the Fiscal 23 Capital Plan, I received new information last week that we would be able to digitize records that would replace paper copies, so if we can document succinctly that we would be able to continue to keep them in the format that's accessible and store them where, in a method that is accessible as well, so, over time, obviously, different formats change, so we would need to continue to keep up with that for especially any permanent type records, ones that don't have to be destroyed after a certain number of years. Preparing for this, a formalized digital storage plan will need to be established, and this will incorporate input from all of our departments and the IT Department. The Public Records Retention Storage Project will first look at destroying all the records that we no longer have to retain, then we'll look at the records that we can destroy, the paper copies if we have them digitally stored, and put in place proper storage of any paper records, and catalog all of our records for retention and location access. Digitization of what records we can eliminate paper copies of will reduce our overall square foot needs for storage, so there's definitely more to come on this once I find out what is involved for the digitization portion of the project.
I'm assuming that we are not the first who are doing this, that there must be people out doing that, so we can pick their brains.
Yes, so I've already put that, yeah, feelers out.
Okay, good.
On a related note, the Municipal Building Design Committee asked if off-site storage was an option. I responded that this would not be optimal for the Town. Records that are not digital need to be easily accessible in order to respond to public records requests, and there are often times that departments need to go look for information in archived records, so it doesn't need to be in the same building that our town offices are, is that, that is currently a situation, there's departments that have records at the TCP that is not in their own building, but I would recommend that it would be in a town-owned building and one that's accessible, handicapped accessible. An update on the email migration project, today, I met with our IT consultants to review the project timeline for the project, as well as review the process. We have about 40% of the staff that has been migrated to the new email platform, and the remaining staff will all be migrated by June 3rd. We're in the process of reviewing all the licenses assigned to staff and any possible changes in license type, and what additional email-only addresses will be needed for Board and Committee members. After June 3rd, we'll begin the process of communicating to all the Board and Committee members, also putting out a pre-migration training date where our IT consultant will host basically a Q&amp;A and walkthrough of the process, and then a post-migration training date as well. So, the communication that will be going out will be sent out after the June 3rd date, and we also include the importance of using a town email account for doing town business.
Absolutely.
Update on meetings.
I'm assuming, if I can interrupt, that we're going to, I would request that this Board can review the plan before it's implemented with regards to committees and boards elected or appointed.
As far as what?
Well, if all of them are going to have them, then we don't have to see it, if everybody's going to have them, but I know there was discussion that some people may not have town email, which I'm not for, but if that is the way to go, then I want to know which Boards and Committees those are, or I think this Board should have the least possibility reviewing it before it's implemented.
At this point, we're planning for all, right now, we're looking at for everyone to have at least a town email.
Okay, thank you.
Events and other announcements, Memorial Day Ceremony will be on Monday, May 30th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Veterans Park. Absentee ballots are now available at the Town Clerk's Office, as stated, and the last day to vote absentee is Friday, May 20th, at noon. The last day for the Yard Waste Collection at Young's Road is Saturday, May 21st. The collection times are 8:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. The Lunenburg Farmers Market will start on Sunday, June 12th, and be every Sunday until Sunday, September 25th, and the band concerts will, again, be at the T.C. Passios Building, Front Lawn, on the following dates, July 11th, July 18th, July 25th, August 1st, August 8th, and a rain date for any of those dates on August 15th.
Any questions for the Town Manager on the report?
No. No, thank you.
So, old business, senior project request from John McCormack, so, I'll let you speak to that, if you will.
Yes, so, we were notified after our meeting last time. In error, we provided the Veterans Park as a location, and the Town Pound, which is on the Marshall Park property, it's part of that parcel, so, the, Mr. McCormack reached out to the Chairperson, the Parks Commission, after Elaine gave him her contact information, and she approved those requests and will bring those to their, the Commission. I think they have a meeting tomorrow night. So, those two were approved. He did go to the Police Chief for the stop sign locations. The Chief advised not to put them on the stop signs, so, he will be working, and his senior advisor allowed that this continue as far as final location, so it's not, he's not up against the deadline of graduation, so, we'll work with him and bring back to the Board as far as alternate locations on Town property, under the Board of Select Board.
And he was, everybody was okay with it?
Which piece?
Well, the whole solution. I mean, Mr. McCormack was fine with the way...
Yes, yeah.
All right. As I said then, I didn't think a stop sign was going to be an appropriate use for a Current business, we're waiting for Mr. Bernie at 8:00, right?
Yes.
All right, so, number one. So, review the composite Town Manager Performance Evaluation. So, I've given everybody a written, printed copy this evening, it's also on the Google Drive as required. In the process, this is considered a draft, the Board, beside my, except for myself who wrote it, or has not seen it, so it is entered into the public record as a draft for the Board to review. I would recommend that they review it, make sure that it fits what they believe is the consensus, and then I will read it next week for finalization. In the interim, the Board members can look at the other members' reviews now, but only in this building and only in printed form, so we're not emailing them to anybody. If you want to see what everybody else wrote, to determine if you read something, it's like, doesn't sound right. You don't have to do it, but it's available to you this week, and any changes you want to make to this document, please email them to me, and only to me, so that I know what your request is and can implement them. It'll be at the Board's discretion, but obviously, I'm open to wording changes and additions, subtractions, et cetera. So, that is the two-week process that we have been doing the past few years, it seems to work fine. But again, as soon as you can read it and comment, if it's okay, and you want to comment to me, just so I'm not guessing, oh, did so-and-so read it, you can tell me back, hey, you read it, it's fine. That would certainly expedite things, so I'm not guessing whether you read it or not. Anyway, come next Tuesday, it's final, anyway, so, because we don't want to go beyond that. And this is the only, by the way, this is the only public document. All the private, all the other ones are individually, are not, they're, those are confidential only, so...
I was just going to mention that I read the section that I was most concerned about. You're not going to get a lot of feedback from me on this.
Well, I tried to, I mean, I, I could tell you my process, but, well, we have to kill time, anyway. So, basically, I took all yours, and for every one of their responses, I put everything that everybody wrote under each section, so I was looking at all four of them at the same time, to make sure that I captured the essence of every, if not the entire thing, because otherwise, it would have been overly long, but, you know, the things that everybody concurred on, which was much, we really had overlap, and the things that were different, you know, I made sure I would pull out the real pertinent points, so, just wanted to make sure everybody's voice is in the documents. All right. Approval of minutes of April 15th. Has everybody read the, April 5th? Thank you. Has anybody read those, and were there any changes or modifications? If there are none, then I would entertain a motion regarding the minutes of April 5th, 2022.
I move to accept the minutes of April, for the meeting of April 5th, 2022, as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Warrants. Assuming this is a, accounts payable warrant in the amount of $334,176.53. Any action items? Mr. Franco, any action items?
Uh, no, I have none.
Mr. Jeffries? No. Only because, well, two things, only because I'm trying to stall a little bit, but also, I want to bring up something that I bring up probably a couple times a year, and one day, one day we'll get it. I'm still, as I pass the, through the Whalen Rotary, there still needs to be a place for people to cross it. It's not, you can't just have people cross nowhere, and you can't have them cross anywhere, so we really need crosswalks, and I've been asking for this for over five years, and I keep getting told, well, you can't put crosswalks if there's no sidewalk on the other side, so I'm like, my suggestion is, before anybody does get injured or gets into an accident there, I'd really like to see the crosswalk, even if it's just to grass, to indicate to the motorists that this is a place where people cross. So, I would recommend it be on the Town Beach side, so from the corner of Emerald Place to the Town, going toward the Town Beach, that would be my recommendation, because this probably has the most traffic, but I just don't think that we should be having that.
Probably that's, we should, we're going to have to revisit the complete streets plan anyways and reprioritize. That and that area was the next area that was focused on, which I would assume would still be the highest priority, so, that would be a method that we could achieve.
Okay. So, I just think it's, every time I go by there, I think it's a safety issue, so. Committee reports.
I have none this week.
Mr. Jeffries?
I do, I have a committee report this week.
Yes.
And I'll give the long version, since...
Yes.
Although, I'm pretty sure I always do. So, we had a meeting with the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee yesterday. It was a joint meeting for the first roughly hour with the School Committee, and I thought it was a really, I thought it was a really productive meeting. Couple, couple things came out. One of the things that we've, so, the process that we're trying to undertake is one in which there's a lot of engagement with the appointing boards, the boards that appoint members to the, to be on the Municipal Building Design Committee, so that way, we end up with a process that is really as inclusive as possible, and we've also changed our format just slightly that allows for public, we've already been allowing it, but now it's more formalized, to allow public participation on any agenda topic, so that way, anyone who joins in can participate, so that way, we maximize the participation. So, a couple good things came out of the meeting with the School Committee. So, the focus prior to this has been on trying to look for ways to decrease square footage, one of which has been storage. So, there were questions that went to the Town Manager about storage, about digitizing records, similar questions went to the school about how they can digitize records, because all these things overall. The plan that we had presented had about 5,000, little more than 5,000 square feet in total for storage, and at the price of roughly, you know, we're looking at $400 or $500 a square foot, that gets into the millions of dollars, and so, anything we can do to decrease that need works. So, that's been successful progress. I think on the Town side, more work to be done, as well as on the School side, so that's one component. The other thing we were talking about with the School Committee was, we also had a series of questions for them about the after-school programs that currently occur in T.C. Passios, and trying to envision a time in which T.C. Passios is no longer available for those programs, how they can be supported by the schools. We did receive an... We did receive an initial response and the initial response basically, I'm going to paraphrase heavily, but it basically said, you know, we, that, that they'd be looking at program elimination in certain areas or implementing caps, especially into the extended day program because of certain complications, primarily being that it would have to be housed in the cafeterias within the schools, that they're having difficulty staffing the programs already and that staff have indicated that that's not their ideal location and that that may cause some turnover, difficulty staffing, which then affects how many children participate. The key takeaways from the conversation with the school committee, I think, were that we all generally felt that whatever solution we come up with, the, the short-term solution, long-term solution, that, that we can't have a loss to parents, that it needs to be no net loss. And I think that was one of the kind of the key takeaways, that it would be difficult to, to come to the town and sell the town on how we're going to come up with a solution if the result of it is that you're not going to have your kids go to extended day or there's now a unfair cap. Or not, I wouldn't use the word unfair, but a lower cap. So that was one of the, I would say, key takeaways. Another part of the conversation that I thought was really, was really helpful as well as hearing the school feedback and making sure that they're part of the decision-making process. There were questions about the reality that the school committee previously had requested for TC Passios to come off of being school use or school property and coming onto municipal property and how the building is now mostly occupied by school-related functions. And if the schools want to take the position that they have a use for the building. And that they would like, not that we were trying to pass the buck, but trying to get them to, trying to understand if it, if it is their position, that they want this property to be a future school. As we've heard from many members of the community. That this conversation, as reported by the school committee, I guess, has been had, that they're committed to the education of children, no matter where it happens, and that they're not committed to that location necessarily being a future school. However, I think that it, they also brought up, you know, Turkey Hill and how Turkey Hill is going to factor into this equation. So it was a really good, healthy conversation, I think, that really advanced, dug into some of this. And I think there was also this under, we also kind of threw out there this proposition or this, this idea about Ritter. And this really is, I'm giving, probably being a little weedy as I say this, but the idea with Ritter, basically the question was if Ritter, if the Ritter building is rehabilitated to have a new HVAC system with walls that go to the ceiling, capability of giving private office space, do they see any objections to that building working for their departmental needs? And the answer was no, that they would not. And that certainly they would need to see what that plan is. But based on their previous, super-ness previous walkthrough of the building, that the main concerns were just the walls not going to the ceiling. And that that's resolved if the town can make a minimal investment there, that that may be a building that works. So the homework that we have for ourselves is that as we go into our next meeting, which is happening on June the sixth, that we're all going to, our focus over the next meeting is to start talking about the prioritization criteria, that we have all the space needs from our, all the work we've already done. And we want to take another look at that to decrease really what those requests were. And so we're coming with a prioritization list, we're going to discuss it at the next meeting. Another thing that we're going to start the conversation on at the next meeting is I'm going to borrow Peter Beardmore's phrase of king for a day or queen for a day, is we really want to start the process of now that we've dug into what these buildings need and for the most part, most of the work that was recommended by Vertex and Tape has occurred. And so there's not a lot, I mean, there are things left over, but the things that are left over will be addressed in any kind of future use change. And so there's really nothing that's glaring. I want to make sure I keep my train of thought here. So I'm blinking for a second. So I just, I just blinked to where I was at. I'm not even that old, I'm having senior moments.
Well, just before telling the future, that's all.
Yeah, it is. So overall, it was a good committee meeting though and all. We, the, the second part of that homework was right, was king, queen for a day. Now that with all the information that we have, what is this ideal plan that everyone can see themselves? And so I think what we're also going to start the process of is the next kind of two meetings is walking through and really kind of having an engaged, critical review of, of everyone's kind of individual thoughts of what they think could work. So that we really can vet this through and look at pros and cons and then come up with kind of some initial options for what we think could package together. In a way, there's a lot more work to be done, but the process, I think, that we're going through is we're trying to be really deliberate. And really the point is to come up with documents that we can send back out to other boards, including this one, for comment and feedback.
Cool, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. McCormack. We've already discussed it, but now that you're here in person, we can revisit it.
Yes.
Welcome again.
Um, I could want to just come back and talk a little bit about what's been going on, going on the past week for geocaching the project. Last week's meeting concluded with the, I guess, determination that I needed to contact DPW alongside Chief of Police and Parks Commission. So me and Assistant Manager Peterson have been going back and forth a little bit. She provided me with the proper contact information for the chief as well as the Parks Commissioner. However, she also said that the, at least whoever I needed to contact within the DPW was, or I guess that person was acquiring a new position. So she would provide me with that email at a later date. However, so I did contact the Chief of Police and Parks Commission. And from that, the first response I got was from Chief of Police and he requested that I not place caches on the stop signs, which is very fair and understandable. So I was looking to find alternate locations to put those caches. However, I also got a response back from the Parks Commissioner, who was okay with me placing the caches on the pound as well as in the Veterans Park. She did say, however, that she would try to grant me that permission now to help me expedite the placement of caches and would bring everyone up to sport at the, up to speed at the next meeting. However, I guess that's pretty much where I stand now. And then that email, I believe I had forwarded over to.
Yes, we saw.
Yeah, it's Peterson.
Have you scouted out other locations on the stop sign?
So, yeah, so I had a couple of ideas. So instead of the stop sign down by the gazebo, instead I was thinking I could place one under one of the benches as there is like a steel bar underneath that a magnet cache could sit at. Alongside utilizing the Ritter building, I saw that there were a couple of places like, I think against the building, there was a sort of metal air-related machine that I could put a magnetic cache on or possibly by the picnic tables. And that is pretty much, I guess, where we are now, so.
So from the bench, I have, and I'll just speak for myself, I have no problem with that. Putting anything against the building, I don't want to create traffic around the building itself. So if there's ways away from the buildings that we can do it.
Yeah, yeah.
It would seem to be more, yeah, appropriate. Because we don't want people.
Sure.
Looking around and, you know, there's plantings or anything or hedges, I don't want people sneaking around.
Yeah, and I assume it's a condenser maybe.
Yeah, it sounds like a condenser.
That you're talking about, so and that's probably not the best location.
So I would say anything away from the building.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, for the meantime, I could try to scout out a new location for at least that cache that I had in mind. However, is the one by the park bench okay, I guess, in a sense?
I'm fine with the.
Sounds good.
Park bench.
Okay, okay.
And if, just to prevent him, you know, Mr. McCormack, for him to come back, is everybody okay? And are you okay if I make the suggestion that we would give our approval through the town manager, that we'll authorize the town manager to approve the last one? So you can contact the town manager and if she feels it's fine, that we don't have to have another meeting about it.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you, is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Are you okay with that? All right, so that will prevent having another meeting, so.
Yeah, okay. So I will then remain in contact and try to find another location. However, I guess from the Parks Commissioner's standpoint, I wasn't sure if she was referring to a select board meeting where she would bring, I guess, to attention that she'd approved that or if that was something else.
She was talking about her Parks.
Okay.
The separate elected board.
Okay, so I guess by her granting me the approval that she at least did in the email, is that enough for me to place caches there? Or should I wait for the rest of her, I guess, board to have that discussion?
Do you want the official answer or the unofficial answer?
I, I'll take both.
The official, the official answer is that a, any single member of any board doesn't have the authority to give you permission to do that.
Okay.
Okay, including this board. However, unofficially, if she's okay with it and she thinks her board is, they're the ones who are going, would be bringing it up.
Okay.
So, I mean, if they have given, if the chair has, the only thing that could happen is that her board votes it down and saying to her that you don't have that permission and denies it and then you just have to remove it.
Okay, okay.
They have a meeting tomorrow night, so you're going to hear, I'm sure, shortly.
Is that a Zoom meeting or is that a?
Yes.
In person, okay.
Zoom, so you can log in on the town website under the calendar. You can find the meeting information with the Zoom meeting link and you can log on to the meeting if you want.
I'll try to tune into that then.
Town government is like a whole new language, isn't it?
It's a good learning experience.
Absolutely.
How many people you have to touch. But otherwise, yeah, otherwise you're, you're set. So for your, for your last location, just talk to the town manager and if she okay's it. Otherwise, you can use the bench that you just cited today. And, you know, I would encourage you to probably join the, either go to or at least join via Zoom. The Parks Commissioner, are they meeting in person?
No.
Oh, so, so you're not going to be able to meet them in person, so meet them on Zoom.
Okay, okay, excellent.
I think you're going to have a couple, I just got a message that you're going to get a Parks member signing one here momentarily. Or two.
Okay, excellent, excellent.
So, you may.
All right, well, I guess from that standpoint, that's pretty much everything that's going on in the project area of things. I will say, I did get to present what I currently have to my class at school. Everything went very well. The presentation was excellent and I think it was well-received. I think I definitely inspired a couple of people to maybe go give it a try, find the caches within the center of town. But I do, I would like to thank everyone on the board for the help that you did provide with me last week and this week, as I literally couldn't have done it without you guys. So, yeah, but that is definitely appreciated and I will look, look to place those cache, the three caches and look for a location for the fourth.
We want it to be successful for, for you and it sounds like an interesting project. Like I said, I know friends who do geocaching. I, I've never tried it myself, so.
Awesome. Yeah, but then again, I thank you guys, so much appreciated.
Hang out for a second, is somebody wanting to speak to this?
Tom, it's Karen Menard. Do you mind if I interrupt for a second?
Go ahead.
Great, this is Karen Menard, the Chair of the Park Commission. Hi, John. We are meeting tomorrow evening. After last week's meeting, I was not the only one that had tuned into that meeting and there were multiple phone calls to me concerned about the way things had gone down last week. And based on those conversations, I am more than comfortable saying to John that he is okay to place them before our meeting tomorrow. I do expect everybody at our meeting tomorrow to support the locations at Veterans Park and at this full town pound.
Awesome, thank you, that's much appreciated.
Thank you, and if you want to join in that meeting, John, you're welcome to. I can try to put you on as soon as I see you. The Zoom link is on the, the town's website on our agenda for tomorrow evening.
Excellent, thank you, yeah, I'll definitely tune into that tomorrow if I can.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Tom.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, awesome. Then again, thank you all, much appreciated.
I'm sorry to have you wearing, unless you wear a tie every day, I'm sorry you had to wear a tie. Okay. You too. Okay, we have, I did not have any committee reports, by the way.
Actually, yeah, would it be improper for me to reopen action items for a second?
You don't have to reopen, you can just comment on anything you want.
I'd like to relitigate.
Now I've cut, now I've cut.
So do I.
You better choose the right verb next time.
Just to follow up, when I told this board two weeks ago, I think, that I, after having gone to the school committee meeting two weeks ago, that I had inquired about their naming policy for buildings and structures and that they were going to get that policy over to us. I didn't know who, to whom they were planning on getting that. Did they get that over to us, to the?
They did and I, you didn't receive it because I thought I forwarded it.
If you requested it, why wouldn't they send it to you?
Well, it's a good question. I hadn't received it and then I thought about it afterwards. I was like, she said she would get it to us and that was ambiguous. So I, that could have been you, the town manager, could have. So I just wanted to not ask them for it before I knew whether.
So I'm assuming.
I've received it and I've, I thought I forwarded it to you, but it might have went to the wrong suffix. Because there was a day where.
This is why email migrations are always.
Where it auto-filled on suffix.
We don't have lunenburgma.gov yet.
No. I'm very pleased we're going to that finally.
Yeah.
Finally, finally. Though it's lunenburgma.gov, which is still not really what it should be. It should be lunenburg.ma.gov, but I guess, don't look a gift horse. Small steps, I guess. Okay. We have Mr. Bernie now, I see. So we can go back to current business number one. Letter of support to the Montechusich Regional Planning Commission for Planning Assistance Grants, the longest title of the evening by far.
If I talk a lot, your title's going to be long for me, so.
Mr. Bernie, good evening.
Good evening. So I'm sure you all will remember a few months ago, I came and espoused the virtues of the new MBTA Communities zoning guidelines, chapter 48, section 3A, and the town's requirement to comply with these guidelines outlined by the Department of Housing and Community Development. We filled out the community information form. And now going forward, the state is offering a planning assistance grant to start looking at locations and densities and developing a roadmap for compliance with the MBTA Communities zoning. Montechusich Regional Planning Commission is putting together a series of applications for its member communities. And in discussing with the town manager and members of the planning board, the general, if not unanimous, but the general consensus was that we should explore what this looks like and have some real technical assistance to do so in order to socialize the idea and identify what folks around town might think of this and how it might affect us and how we might be able to comply if we so chose. So working with Karen Chapman from MRPC, we've developed a framework of a scope of services which would be looking at the geographic area, so using their GIS capabilities to identify geographic areas that would compile the 50-acre zoning district, helping to identify what density, excuse me, that might look like and how we might comply with the density requirements. And then investigating our compliance and we know we're non-compliant. So what we would be doing then is developing an action plan that would help us execute moving forward to drafting the zoning bylaw and then coming up with a draft zoning bylaw. This grant is due this coming Friday and would carry through the end of fiscal year '24. So it's a, essentially a two-year grant. So we would have a significant amount of time to move through this process and identify, you know, what, what we might do. The town would be obligated to execute the terms of the contract, but it doesn't obligate us to adopt the zoning or frankly, to even put it on a town meeting warrant, just that we would move through the, the planning steps that we outlined in the grant.
And so what are you looking for from the, from the select?
Uh, we're looking for the board to endorse the application as the, the chief elected officials of the town.
Do we have such, you said it's due this, you're submitting it. Our, our letter of support isn't, doesn't need to be ready by?
Is for this.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, please go ahead.
I was going to ask, you're saying that the application is due on Friday?
Correct.
Okay, but this letter of support, I mean, isn't due by Friday? That's just in, I mean, how are we, I'm just trying to think, unless we authorize the town manager, we won't even have a chance to look at it before we vote again.
And that, I would request that you authorize the town manager as I believe the entire packet would be due on Friday by 4:00 P.M.
Okay.
The letter would be short and very.
Uh, and, well, so is the time, so is the deadline. The letter would be short, as is the deadline. For, for whoever this is addressed to, I, I, so, as a member, I'm certainly in, in, in support of it, and I'll let the other members speak, but I, I, I'm not, I, I'm always baffled about why, like, the board would be brought in three days before it's due, asking for a support for something that we just got, you know, you, you, you mentioned it once before. Briefly, you gave us a brief explanation now, but we're asked to be supportive of it with no time to really draft a letter, to discuss a letter. It just seems like it's always under the wire, it's always like race, 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 so. Anyway, that's my own editorial, it doesn't require a comment back. The, so I'll open up to the board members, how you feel about the letter of support.
My default position is that I'm not going to not support it, so, sure.
I support the letter of, um, the, I, I understand that this, I've been talking with other people who are kind of working on the same thing, Mr. Bernie, and I, I, I get that this is a really engaged process that, um, is kind of a, I get that this is a really engaged process, so. You know, I'm not sold that we, that we need to go in this direction as a community, but I am, uh, sold that if, if the state is offering free money to help us explore how to do this, I think a good faith effort at no cost to us, or no additional cost to us, is, is worth it, so I, I support the letter. The concept of the letter without actually reading the letter, so, uh, Mr. Chair, are you looking for a motion for us to delegate our approval authority on this to, uh, the town manager?
Well, I would like to be included in that, so if you're board, so between me and the town manager.
Okay. You comfortable with such a? All right, uh, I move for the, uh, Chair of the Select Board, Mr. Alonso, and the Town Manager, to have the delegated authority to review and approve the letter of support for the Monticujus Regional Planning Commission for Planning Assistance Grant for MBTA Community Compliance.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None.
And I'll take responsibility for the timing of it. We received the notification from MRPC, um, the week of April twentieth. So, between, you know, gearing up for town meeting, as well as the Pl- Planning Board recently discussed this, and, um, prior to that recent meeting, I believe, we're not in favor of any kind of movement towards, uh, compliance with the MBTA Housing Act, um, so.
Who was not in the Planning Board?
The Planning Board, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, but the, the vocal members of the Planning Board, when we first discussed this, were, um, in a, in a similar position of being opposed to, uh, the, the compliance, and upon having another discussion, the members in attendance at the last meeting felt that while they're not supportive of the requirements, they feel that if we can make an effort to identify what it might look like, get broader community engagement in it, it will, uh, further strengthen the town's position if they do decide to obfuscate and not comply.
Yep.
And, and this grant would, would certainly assist in that.
So after talking to Mr. Bernie after that meeting, uh, we thought this would be a good opportunity to take advantage of some grant assistance, but the timing is short.
I'm all for going for grants, especially ones that, you know, I, I'm, as Mr. Jeffrey said, I completely agree with his wording. I'm forward to investigating it and discovering what it means, as long as we're not committed to it, that's fine. I mean, the, the purpose of such things is so that you shouldn't have to be committed, that it should be self-evident why you should do them if there are such great programs and great zoning, so, uh, the fact that we can investigate it with a grant makes sense to me. Okay. It is all in favor, so if you would, you know, with Mr. Bernie, draft something, and just let me review it before we approve it, that'd be fine.
Certainly.
Much appreciated.
I appreciate you joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too. Seeing Mr. Bernie also reminded me that I should have announced that last Wednesday, it was last Wednesday, right?
Yes.
Yes, last Wednesday, the town manager, Mr. Bernie, and I had a chance to participate in the Lunenburg Central ceremonial groundbreaking. So it was a really nice event, great bunch of people, they had all the investors there, all developers, uh, there, and it was a, you know, short and sweet ceremony, but, you know, the whole, the whole site is ready to go, um, for a building, so most of the site, or much of the site work, I wouldn't say all, but much of the site work is completed, and there was some good photo op, uh, but a good chance to meet all the three major parties in doing it, and, uh, this could be the beginning of something that really enhances that whole corridor, uh, for that land that's owned as industrial along that stretch, so. Very positive event.
Chair, may I just revisit committee report?
Sure.
There was one, and I'm not sure if this really is a committee report or a public comment or a hybrid, but I made the note under committee reports. So there was a, a comment was made by not just one, but a couple of residents about some mass development money and how we can get our hands on it, and part of it, I think, was probably addressed to me because I work for mass development. So I just wanted to give some clarification to this, because, um, we, mass development sends out communications. Mass development is a quasi-state agency, uh, that is a, it's, it's really called Mass, Massachusetts Development Financing Agency, and the purpose of mass development is kind of twofold, one part is a land bank, and the other part for this, for the Commonwealth, and the other part of it is, uh, promoting economic opportunities, uh, really through investing in businesses, providing businesses with low, um, with bonds, with, with, um, not, yeah, basically providing businesses with bonds, providing them with, uh, loans at very low affordable interest to stimulate economic opportunity. They also provide grant money and a bunch of other fun, money that really deals with buildings, rehabilitating buildings, and anything that's gonna help promote and push economic activity. So a lot of the programs that are, that are publicized are focused on one, one part of mass development that's called, um, you know, TDI districts, which are these targeted districts, districts that are in, all of them are in urban areas in which they're targeting certain parts of urban areas, Worcester, Lawrence, Springfield, um, et cetera, Fall River, and they're trying to bring up those areas and, and, and make them more economically competitive. There seems to be endless funds for that purpose. If you are a business and you are a private property owner and you are trying to, if, you know, get your business to grow and expand, they're right there to support you every step of the way with the business planning, et cetera. If you're a municipality and you have old property, uh, that is somewhat blighted and mass development, if you're a municipality with a certain population, mass development is also right there to help you out. But if you are a town like Lunenburg, you, um, you are, we are considered wealthy, um, by the state standards, and the idea behind the help is not targeted towards us. So what they, what, what is available, um, and again, by mass development standards, Lunenburg is considered a wealthy community, and so the money that's available is really limited to just some design development dollars. Uh, I think our cap is about two hundred thousand dollars max is what we'll ever get from them, and currently, there are no programs for which we really would qualify for that big chunk of money. There are certain programs that Heather's been working with certain parts of mass development on that have been really successful, and there's money to kind of put together some planning, um, but really, the money that we're talking about, millions of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars, unfortunately, it's just not within the mission of mass development to support that. So I just wanted to give that insight, because again, several residents have commented on this, they've sent me emails, like, look at this, and I know I see them every day. Part of being a mass development employee is every day, we get all of the press releases that go out, uh, before they actually get released, and it's a lot of money, it's, you know, it's a lot of money that's being handed out, but unfortunately, Lunenburg is not gonna be a recipient of it.
For the record, that was not a committee report. That was a public comment, that's okay. Also, I think it's probably, I would rephrase that Lunenburg is wealthy, I think by mass development standard, they would, they would say politically, we are above the necessary threshold to qualify. You start saying that, you start, you start saying that people are wealthy, and you get lots of comments back, by the way. Okay, anybody want to revisit anything else on, on the agenda? All right, we have the upcoming meeting, so there, this Thursday is the APDC hearing for the Ritter Building Certificate to Alter, and that's May nineteenth, seven thirty, at the, at the Ritter Building itself, right? Then, of course, as the town manager mentioned, the annual town election is this Saturday, TC Passio's building, from seven A M. to five P M. Our next meeting is next Tuesday, that'll be the last meeting of the month. Uh, we have the Memorial Day Ceremony on the thirtieth of May at ten A M. at Veterans Park. And the second APDC hearing for the Town Hall Certificate to Alter is June sixth at seven thirty P M. at the Ritter Building. So lots of fun activities.
I have one date, I just want to confirm with the board, the volunteer appreciation, um, event at the Eagle House was June sixteenth at five thirty to seven, that worked for everyone. We have, we're penciled in for the Eagle House. It, I believe that's Thursday, Thursday, yeah.
It will work, what, you said five thirty?
It's a Thursday.
And from when to when?
Five thirty to seven.
Okay. Unfortunately, I will be out of town during that time, but don't hold that train back for me, unfortunately, but, you know, that's, that's the way it goes. I'll be in Vegas, I'll get over it.
Win big for us.
Red thirty-two, remember.
Okay.
Put that on my calendar.
Any final public?
Did you want to discuss, um, bringing up the memorial tree? That was removed?
Yes, I mentioned it last week, but I will say again, oh, no, we wanted, you and I want to discuss how to respond to the email, not here.
All right, okay.
Yes. Just to be aware that the, um, the large Christmas tree that was cut down from Town Center to do, I mentioned this last week, that was cut down to make way for the sidewalks, the DPW, the new DPW Director is starting this week, and the town manager and I will be discussing with the new DPW Director a location, I understand that the, the people who had the tree dedicated would like to see a replacement tree put on the lower town common, uh, where the gazebo is, and we can start looking at locations, and we will be responding to the email that we received, asking us for more information. Uh, we will have that, we want to get the DPW Director started and at least settled in his job a week or two before we'll do that, uh, but it is on our list of things to do, so it has not been forgotten. The vacancy in the DPW Director has made things challenging in lots of regards, so apologies for that. Any public comment from the public? Seeing no hands raised, any public, final public comment from the board?
I have none.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion, all who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, till next Tuesday, everyone. Have a good week, and take care of yourselves, take care of each other, good night.
Recording stopped.